Whenever you're ready, Mr. President. That's different. Thompson. Thompson.
Here, yes.
Festerson is absent. Garnett.
Here.
Jerem.
Milton.
Here.
Pauls.
Here.
Mr. President. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation today by Councilmember Frank Thompson?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Instead of a traditional prayer, I'd like to just give a thought. There's a whole lot in the news now about political people kind of not saying and talking right and causing a lot of division. I'd like for all of us to remember, whether you're up here on the diocese or in the audience, our lives are not our own, that there are children watching us, and that it's important to be, to have civility. What good does it do for me to be a rich man, or wise, or smart, or a degreed person, Democrat or Republican, and then I abuse my privileges when I'm on the microphone? I can, I can be smart and rich and still go to hell while wearing gasoline underwear. So, I'd just like to say that it's important, and I'm speaking even of my own political party, to do things right, and to, and that civility is utmost importance. I'd also like to acknowledge that my colleague, a longtime colleague on the council, Gary Garnett, has a very important thing that he'd like to say, too.
Thank you, Dr. T. I would just like to recognize and acknowledge the student athletes at Omaha South High School for being the state basketball champions, and also to remember their, their coach, Groot Chubbick. You know, he suffered a heart attack, but he fought through that, and he stayed with those kids, and they turned out to be champions as they are. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I knew when he was at West Hope.
City Clerk certified publication on the Daily Record Official Newspaper on March 11th, and owes her a pre-council and regular city council meeting March 15th, 2016. Current copy of the openings that posted white binder on the East Ball legislative chambers.
Thank you. The Omaha City, this Omaha City Council meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud nor convey disapproval. These actions detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic devices. Mr. Clerk.
Reconsideration. Item number five is a motion by Councilmember Garnett to reconsider special ordinance number 10192, passed as amended March 8th, 2016, being a special ordinance, levying a special tax assessment for cutting weeds. Group number 2016-05 with a roll call on March 22nd, 2016. We need a second.
Second.
Zoning ordinance on final reading, planning board attachments. Item number six, ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use district development agreement for midtown crossing to allow for temporary signage that exceeds the 32 square feet foot sign maximum located southeast of 33rd and Farnham Streets. A planning board recommends approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number six is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Been moved and seconded to approve. No further lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Six is passed, six to nothing. Item number seven, ordinance to appeal an ACI 150 area of civic importance overlay district for property located at 2505 Oak Street, originally enacted under ordinance number 39242 dated February 28th, 2012. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number seven is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve. No further lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Eight is passed, six to zero. Item number nine, ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use district development agreement for Roanoke Business Park to allow an assisted living facility located southeast of 120th and Ford Streets, providing site development standards. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number nine is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Jim Bouger, 10250 Regency Circle. I represent Roanoke AL LLC, which is the developer of the assisted living facility that we build on these lots. It'll be an 80-unit assisted living facility with 20 memory care units. We have playing department and playing board recommendation for approval of the major amendment to mixed use agreement. I ask for your support today. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve. No further lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Nine is passed, six to zero. Resolutions, repurposed flats and flats. Item number 10, resolution of the permanent flat entitled North 90th Plaza Replat 3, located at 3809 North 90th Street along attached conditions hereby accepted and preparation of final flat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 10 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Been moved and seconded to approve. No further lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Ten is adopted, six to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 78, due to no being being held, March 29th, agenda items number 11 through 13 should be laid over three weeks to April 5th for publication and public hearing. Liquor, item number 14, Goldberg Zen Dundee, 5008 Dodge Street, Class I liquor license new application, old location.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 14 is today. Proponents, please.
Thomas Morello, 3714 Castelar Street. I am the manager listed on the application. I ask for your support.
Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to be heard today? Seeing none, any opponents who wish to be heard? Public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve. No further lights, roll call.
Councilman Festerson enter the chambers. Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Fourteen is adopted, seven to zero. Item number 15 is Sam Leon's Mexican Foods, 5014 South 20th Street, Class I liquor license new application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 15 is today. Proponents, please.
Christine Luskart, and I'm here with the owners. My address is 1403 Farnham Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve. No further lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Fifteen is adopted, six, or seven to zero. Item number 16, Dave and Buster's at 2502 South 133rd Street, or 133rd Plaza Suite 111. Request permission to appoint Jaclyn Wash, manager.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 16 is today. Proponents, please.
Jaclyn Wash, 5340 South 156th Street.
Thank you. Any other proponents wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve. No further lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Sixteen is approved, seven to zero. Item number 17, Immaculate Conception Church, DBA De Paduta Club, 2701 South 25th Street. Request permission to appoint Stephen Sempec, manager.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 17 is today. Proponents, please.
Stephen Sempec, 4105 South 173rd Street in Omaha, applying to be manager.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve. No further lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Seventeen is approved, seven to zero. We'll take 18, 19, and 20 together. They're all Keno license applicants. 18 is a resolution that Big Red has granted approval to operate a satellite Keno location at 4503 Center Street, McFly's Center Street Tavern. 19 is 13806 P Street, The Taco Mill. And 20 is 2332 South 24th Street, Welcome Inn Tavern.
Public hearing on agenda, items 18, 19, and 20 are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. My name's Katrina Coffey. I'm vice president of marketing for Big Red Keno. We're located at 11248 John Call Boulevard. I have with me today the three owners of the three locations that appear in before you, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Public hearing is closed. Public, uh, it's been moved and seconded to approve. No further lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Eighteen through twenty are adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by city council meeting following the consent agenda and the order in which they are removed unless otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
Public hearing on agenda, items numbers 20 through, and 20, 20 through 21 and 22 were held on March 8th, 2016. Moved and seconded, no further lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-one and twenty-two are passed, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda, items numbers 23 through 29 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded, no further lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Eighteen through twenty are adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by city council meeting following the consent agenda and the order in which they are removed unless otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
Public hearing on agenda, items numbers 20 through, and 20, 20 through 21 and 22 were held on March 8th, 2016. Moved and seconded, no further lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-one and twenty-two are passed, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda, items numbers 23 through 29 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded, no further lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Eighteen through twenty are adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by city council meeting following the consent agenda and the order in which they are removed unless otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
Public hearing on agenda, items numbers 20 through, and 20, 20 through 21 and 22 were held on March 8th, 2016. Moved and seconded, no further lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-one and twenty-two are passed, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda, items numbers 23 through 29 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded, no further lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-three through 29 are adopted, seven to zero. Ordinance on final reading, item number 30, ordinance going to assess the appropriating, terminating for use of the city of Omaha, the conditions established in ordinance number 35299, which did not allow for an outdoor discharge of firearms at the Joint Police Fire Training Facility located north and west of the intersections of Blair High Road and Rainwood Road. A and B are documents submitted.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 30 is today. It was held on 3116. I guess we have some, a breakthrough that, that I think we can talk about today, Mr. Indembach.
And there's also, before he gets to Mr. Indembach, there was also a C, which was a document submitted by the attorney.
Correct. Bernard Indembach, Deputy City Attorney. And Mr. Brown is correct that I submitted to him this morning a document C entitled Landowner and City Agreement as to Use of the Outdoor Gun Range Proposed by the City of Omaha. It's a two-page document, which I also emailed to each of the council members. Just by way of report, and before I get started, I want to thank the neighbors that were, that met with Ms. Milton, myself, Mr. Eastman, and Deputy Chief Gonzalez, Sean Malots, who's here, Stan Meredith, and then their counsel, Chris Kurzon. We met a couple times after the last council meeting to kind of try to, to work through some of the concerns, and we've come up with a proposal or an agreement as to things that we have agreed to make part of a conditional use permit. They address the neighbors' concerns. I appreciate they don't, they're not going to make all the neighbors perfectly happy, and they're going to impose some additional requirements on the city, but, but I do appreciate their willingness to sit down with us, to, to talk through the issues, and come up with something that we're all in agreement with. I'll hit the highlights very quickly. The three issues that are kind of primarily addressed, and you've had a chance to see it, noise. We've agreed to a maximum decibel within a quarter mile of 65 decibel, which is seven decibels lower than what was in the original plan provided last month, with at a half mile of that being reduced to 59 decibels, which is one decibel below the high end for low-density residential. We've also indicated that we would make a good faith effort to see if we could go lower, even as low as 62, depending on our budget limitations. So, that'll obviously be part of the, part of it. The second issue that was of primary concern was the hours of operation, so that it wouldn't interfere with neighborhoods' enjoyment of their property. In that regard, we've agreed to limit firing of weapons at the range from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on weekdays, not on holidays, not on weekends, and with generally the time period being March 1st through October 31st, though we do provide that we can fire seven, a period of seven days over the winter months, which typically only happens when the weather is, it tends to be nice. And the third concern, or at least one thing we heard from a lot of neighbors, was a concern about communication. There are several things in the document that talk about communication, some agreement to form a committee and some other things, but most, probably the most important one is we've agreed to the extent that we make any effort to modify the conditional use permit for the use of this property in the future, that we will provide information to the neighbors at least 90 days before that action is introduced to any public body, and that we will provide that notice to everybody within a two-mile radius of the police fire training center. And that allows for some opportunity for some discussion and things to occur. So, those are kind of the highlights of the agreement between the parties. I, I'll, we've actually already submitted them to the architect. We're going to put an amended conditional use permit request, but I, I stand here before the council pledging that those conditions will be made part of the city's application. The planning board will be made aware of them, and we're going to request that the planning board make them part of the conditional use permit to which the city's use of this facility for an outdoor gun range is permitted. And I can't anticipate any circumstance where they wouldn't, but I, I know there's at least the neighbors wanted to make sure that everybody understood that it had to be part of the conditional use permit, and I stand here telling you that that's, that's the intention. So, and if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to attempt to answer them.
Thank you.
If there aren't any questions, I think Ms. Malots is here as well, and if...
Ms. Malot, if you...
Sean Malots, 10404 North 132nd Street, Omaha. I'm here on behalf of the landowners, and I'd just kind of like to have a written speech. And first, I'd like to thank the council for getting us to this point. But 15 years ago, we all heard this, that landowners stood before this city council, opposing the construction of the fire training center, fire and police training center. After a contentious battle, a compromise was reached when landowners acquiesced through this ordinance, which prohibits the outdoor discharge of firearms. All involved agreed that safety and noise concerns were the key factors in this decision, factors that exist today. Fast forward to two weeks ago, when area landowners and their representatives stood before this council, asking that they honor this agreement. Thankfully, you held over your decision, and thankfully, you agreed to meet with opponents to attempt to reach common ground. As such, over the past two weeks, Chris Kurzon, attorneys for the landowner, Stan Meredith, and I, as representatives of the landowners, have met with city council personnel, council person, Amy Mountain, to discuss the situation. The result of these meetings is the agreement presented today. This new agreement, while appreciated, is again requiring landowners to acquiesce and thereby accept an outdoor gun range in our neighborhood. While many continue to oppose the outdoor discharge of firearms and continue to have concerns regarding the noise impact, the citizen's safety, and yet another compromise, we believe it is in our best interest, in the best interest of the taxpayers, to move forward and work for this, work with the city government for everyone's sake. With that, we accept with trepidation the landowner and city agreement as to the use of the outdoor gun range proposed by the city of Omaha, citing our continued reservations against the proposed range. With respect to the sound issues, as Bernard stated, in paragraph A, the document has agreed to achieve, achieve a decibel level of 65, and 59 within a half range, half-mile range. As landowners, we felt that below the 62-decibel level reading within a quarter mile was more acceptable. However, we were denied this request due to the expected increase in cost of complying. We continue to ask for the 62-decibel level inside the quarter mile, citing the known contrast between the intensity of an impulse sound, such as a gunfire, versus the soothing continuous sounds of traffic noise. And as such, we implore that all efforts are made to accomplish the requested 62-decibel levels reading within the quarter-mile range. In our estimation, the cost is minimal when complying to a broken promise, and the adverse noise impacts to the landowners. We do, on the other hand, express our appreciation of paragraph B, allowing landowners to assist in choosing test sites and be actively involved in the acoustic testing process. There are specific landowners who will be more adversely affected by the sound of gunfire than others, and we believe it's vital to test the sound levels at their residence. Let us not forget that landowners can be expected to hear approximately 200,000 rounds of gunfire per year, 1,400 rounds per day, and 200 rounds per hour, based on existing practices. Naturally, these numbers will increase. On the safety issues, we be, we are continued to be concerned about safety, including environmental issues as addressed in paragraph C, supervision issues outlined in paragraph D, and public safety issues not specifically addressed in this agreement. We fear the safety of those traveling along Highway 133 and Highway 36, and those living in homes near the site. We recognize that even in a controlled environment, guns are dangerous. No one can guarantee a bullet will not ricochet. Again, budget restraints should not overshadow the price associated with the loss of a potential life. Then we come to the trust issues. Today, landowners living near the training center are again placing, placing our trust in this city council. We are trusting that you will help guide the agreement through the proper channels to ensure that the terms and conditions are adopted, and we are trusting that landowners are never placed in a position of mistrust. In conclusion, I thank the city council for slowing down this process, taking the time to work in partnership with the area residents to find compromises, and to continue working with landowners during, during the construction and operation of the impending outdoor gun range. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to thank Attorney Indembach for carrying the water on this. I know it was the type of deal where we needed somebody who was very capable, and thank you for the work that you did.
and the neighbors, moving forward as it gets built and determining the sites where we're going to do the levels. So I have to say that I was very impressed with both sides and with all of the people involved. And I really do, Sean, I want to thank you and Mr. Meredith and Mr. Kurzon and everybody for their willingness to really kind of brainstorm and come up with something that may not be ideal, but I think is good for the city, good for the police, and good for the residents. So, and I want to thank this council for giving us the opportunity to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Bernard, could I have you come forth? When I heard just a second or two ago, I felt there's still an uneasiness with the people who live in that area because of this trust area. When this first started a couple of weeks ago, the thing that was a major issue with me is the concept of a promise. Is a promise a day, a year, five days, five years, whatever? And I counted in this document you gave to us, and I'm sure this is going to be part of the record.
Yes, it has, it is.
Okay, will be part of the record. So if anybody in the future has a question, if we make this part of the record, they can come back and say, "Hey," instead of, you know, "So I feel good" type stuff, we have the actual document here. And what I counted, I counted it just as I went through it very fast, approved it, there were six agrees and two ensures. To me, when I see the word "ensure," that's a pretty powerful word. We are stating, actually, as you said earlier, a pledge. And that's, as I get ready to vote on this, I should feel comfortable that this is going to be a pledge that will be carried out, because I hear there's still a concern about the noise level, and there's a cost factor. But let's say something does happen out there, will cost be the reason we do not improve the noise?
Potentially, it will be. We've agreed to a certain level.
Yes.
Which is the sixty-five decibels.
Right.
In a quarter-mile.
Right.
And then once you get to the half-mile, we've agreed to fifty-nine. We basically said, "We'll make a good faith effort to try to get it to sixty-two, but it's going to depend on budgetary limitations." Now, and I don't want to, because I don't think it's constructive to rehash the arguments, but I mean, the area that we're talking about is zoned industrial, so we could go to eighty. So we've come down to sixty-five, and I, and if we can go lower, believe me, we will try. And you talk about trust, there's no question there's an issue of trust. We've tried to set up, we have the committee that we've agreed to set up. We've also agreed to reactivate the facility management committee and have a neighborhood representative. And my hope is, those things will help to fix the trust, but there's no way we're going to fix the trust in two weeks.
No.
And...
And I don't mean to be running the water down or up the river one more time, but I think if we at least are stating it in front of God and everybody, that means that we are all going to make an effort on this. That's all my, the point I'm trying to get across.
I think we've, we've, we've not only said we're going to make an effort, we've made commitments of what we're going to, what we're going to do.
And I do thank you.
And try to do.
Yes, and I thank you for, because I know you have been working on this. Thank you.
There are no further lights. It's been moved and seconded to approve. Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirty is passed seven to zero. Resolution, item number thirty-one, resolution attached HDR Headquarters Tax and Financing Relocation Project Plan for a redevelopment site located northwest of Eleventh and Dodge Streets, which propose a 290,000 square foot office tower that will consist of approximately fourteen to fifteen floors of office space, a parking structure, retail space, recommend the city participate to the allocation of TIF as hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-one is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, members of council. Bridget Hadley, City Planning. This project is the...
Before you start, before you go ahead, can I, Mr. Indembach, if I could have you all move outside, please? Thank you. Go ahead.
So this project is the HDR Headquarters, the new relocation site of the HDR Headquarters, as indicated in, on this aerial, outlined in yellow, and it will involve the sale of these two city lots to HDR to complete the project. To kind of summarize, this particular project represents a major infill redevelopment opportunity within the city's center business district area. It also represents an opportunity to strengthen Omaha's city center image when we have major employers, businesses that locate in the central business district. It is also an opportunity to reduce or eliminate the number of surface parking lots in the downtown area and to convert them into a higher use, represents an opportunity to place parcels that are owned by the city back on the tax rolls. It also represents an opportunity to bolster the downtown area as a destination and creating more pedestrian activity. It also directly addresses the redevelopment of a parcel that was identified in the 2030 Downtown Master Plan. And this project also may provide increased ridership for the BRT, Bus Rapid Transit, as we know that will be coming in the next year or two, and there is a station that is proposed right about in this area. As read into your hearing by Buster, it will be a 290,000 square foot office tower, fourteen to fifteen stories high, will include a structured parking. If I can go to my next here. So this is a preliminary site plan. So the office tower here, this is Dodge Street, just to give you some direction, Eleventh Street, Capitol Avenue, and then Twelfth Street. So the office tower here, parking structure here, and then the retail space, which is about ten thousand, over ten thousand square feet of retail space, that should play well with the Capitol District project that will be just to the north of it. Public improvements are going to be focused around adjacent to the site, a lot of streetscaping, street trees. There will be improvements along the Eleventh Street, the west half of Eleventh Street would be, there will be an easement to allow for increased improvement for like a public plaza at that site. And, what else? I know that they are reaching for or striving for lead gold, which relates to green building design and techniques. I do have a few renderings, several have been seen, of course, in the World Herald. This is looking toward the river. And this is looking straight on from Dodge Street. And then this is looking, maybe I've had that wrong, this is definitely looking from Dodge Street, I believe, or Eleventh Street, excuse me. And these are schematic, they're preliminary still, the design is still in the preliminary phase, but these are the preliminaries of the schematic drawings. This is, represents over twenty million in TIF and an estimated investment of over one hundred and fifty-one million for this particular project. I know the development team is here that may be able to address any other questions. With that, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, the public hearing is closed. I'm sorry. Okay. Oh, you're over in the corner there, okay. Proponent, opponent?
Opponent.
Thank you.
This is Spence McGruder, 1524 Cummins. I'm not opposed to the project. I am opposed to the TIF application as it was submitted, because it does not address emerging or economic inclusion as part of its plan. As part of your resolution that the city council passed a little more than nine months ago, the city was to urge applicants to include economic inclusion as part of their plan for review by the TIF committee and also this council. So since I have not seen that in their package after reviewing it, I have a real question as to whether policies and procedures were in place to urge the applicant to address economic inclusion as part of their TIF package, or if they were urged, then why did they choose not to include economic inclusion as part of their submittal? Either way, I have a problem with both of them, because the former indicates that there's a systemic problem here, and the latter indicates that there's, there's a problem with HDR's leadership in that regard. I mean, they are leaders in engineering and in design, and I would hope they would show leadership within the development community to show how economic inclusion can be incorporated into a much-needed project. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Jaram.
Yeah, one thing I would note is, as a matter of anecdote, when we looked into the EIP process for tax increment financing, we learned that the statutes really limit what we can do in this regard, and it's really up to the applicant's own personal commitment to diversity and inclusion, and the leadership of HDR has said that they're all about such commitments and including on this one. And I believe they've already had some meetings that began the day after they were here with a number of people. So at this stage of the process, they don't own the property, there's more steps to go in this process, and then eventually, hopefully, as they get into the detailed construction documents and they can break those things out, those commitments will be fulfilled in an appropriate way based upon capacity and abilities of the contractor. So I would say that while I'm not the spokesman for HDR, I do take a little bit of exception to what we just heard in terms of somehow having a suspicion that this company weren't committed to those things, when I know for a fact that they are already working on it. So I would motion to approve.
It's removed and seconded. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chris, I just have a question. You said it's in the statute that that's the issue, the way the statute is written on TIF. Is that what I heard you say?
Well, the redevelopment laws do not allow for us to mandate EIP as a part of the tax increment financing approval process.
And my suggestion is, if that's what we want to do, then we have to go to legislature to have that changed. If that's not an option for us, because of what the statute says, then that's what we're following, what's laid before us. So if there's an issue there, then that needs to be taken up with the legislature. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Melton?
Yeah, I just, I know that there are some people shaking their heads. Was there anybody that wanted to get up and address this? And the reason I ask is, I know I've had multiple meetings with HDR, not even in regards to this, but I've actually sought the advice of some HDR people in how can we encourage, what are the things that the city could do to encourage economic inclusion? And I actually believe HDR has been a leader in our city for the economic inclusion. So I just wanted to give somebody the opportunity.
John Blumenthal, 1700 Farnham Street, legal counsel for HDR, Inc. I would just echo what Councilman Jaram said. Basically, I think he said what I would have said, so without just saying, "Councilman Jaram said it." HDR is a leader in diversity and inclusion. You can go to their website and openly see their, I believe their statements are on there, on diversity and inclusion, which will tell you about their program. With regard to this specific TIF application, the statute frankly doesn't require it, and we wanted to respect the city's process as well, met with the TIF committee, tried to get the application in the form that the TIF committee could follow. And so at this point, we followed the recommendation and the guideline of the city, or I guess what, the guideline of the city, to echo what Councilman Jaram said also. We still don't own the property, we're still entering into construction contracts or in the process of trying to square away our construction contracts. As we do that, there'll be more opportunities for HDR to continue to show that they're a leader in this area, and I expect that they'll do so.
I do too. And so that's why I just wanted somebody from HDR to echo what Councilman Jaram says, that I have full faith in HDR to do this. So with that, I think there, I think there has, has there been a move to approve this?
It's been moved and seconded, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let me just say, Mr. McGruder, just so that you're aware, Councilmember Jaram is accurate, but you know, to go a step further, I've had personal meetings with them, I've had personal meetings with HDR to specifically discuss diversity and inclusion. And let me just say that one of the, one of the plan that I saw going forward, once some of these other preliminary items have been addressed, one of, the plan that they have in place going forward is one of the better ones I've seen. So I'm convinced, as are my, along with my colleagues, that HDR is going to do, is going to go above and beyond in terms of diversity and inclusion, once these preliminary steps have been handled, taken care of, once, you know, they have either ownership, whoever does have ownership, whoever the contractor is going to be working with them. But they have a plan in place that I'm convinced is going to be, is one of the better ones that I've seen up to now. So there's been moved and seconded, there's no further lights, moved and seconded to approve, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirty-one is adopted, seven to zero. Item number thirty-two, resolution, the city council does hereby approve the settlement of the cases entitled William Bush versus the city and Edward Reed versus the city.
Public hearing on agenda item thirty-two is today. Proponents, please. Saying none, are there any opponents? Saying none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded, no further lights to approve, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirty-three is adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant to city council rule seven H, agenda item number thirty-three shall be laid over three weeks for publication. Public hearing. Pursuant to city council rule seventy, the public hearing on agenda items thirty-four through forty-four shall be held on the third reading. Item number, ordinance on second reading, item number forty-five, ordinance approving the acceptance of and authorized distribution of Nebraska Crime Commission grant to fund the operation of the Metro Drug Task Force.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-five is today. Proponents, please. Saying none, are there any opponents? Saying none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item number forty-six, ordinance to approve the Ninth Amendment to the Redevelopment Agreement between the city and Durham Western Heritage Museum for an additional period of three years, 2016, 17, and 18.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-six is today. Proponents, please. Saying none, are there any opponents? Saying none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Forty-seven, ordinance to amend section twenty-three, one-seventy-seven by changing the title of the class specification entitled Crime Analyst Supervisor to Crime Analyst Manager and reassign the salary range.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-seven is today. Proponents, please. Saying none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed, next item.
Pursuant to city council rule seven H, the third reading of public hearing on agenda items forty-eight through fifty-two shall be held on April fifth. Pursuant to city council rule seventy, the public hearing on agenda item number fifty-three through fifty-four shall be held on the second reading, and on the supplement, pursuant to city council rule seventy, the public hearing on agenda item fifty-six shall be held on the second reading.
I'm sorry, did I go too fast, Ms. Melton? Ms. Melton?
Thank you. I just know that there's some people from the Durham Western Heritage Museum who took the time to come down here, who didn't stand up, but if you could stand up, I just wanted to thank you for everything you do. I actually finally have the opportunity to see the collection. It's wonderful, and I'm glad we can do this, and I know that more money should be, that you would like more money. This is about, this is all that we can give you at this point in time, but I want to thank you for working with what you have and taking such good care of it.
Thank you. I'm Kristi Jansen, the director of the Durham Museum, 801 South 10th Street, and we do really look at the, being the repository of the Byron Reed Collection as a true honor, and we are working hard to continue to share that collection, not only locally with our local exhibits that we host, but making that collection available nationwide. And so right now, we do have a bank on loan to Texas from the Byron Reed Collection, but we are really privileged to have that collection. Thank you.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry, that's all I had, but thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Clerk.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Is the motion adjourned?
Gary.
Second roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Milton.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
We stand adjourned at 2:47 PM.[1743.15]